Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 28, 2019 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council will meet again in two weeks. Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Public property, properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, but I have a meeting scheduled on Wednesday at 7:00, which is the 12th of June, following the budget meeting, and we will discuss our proposal for, I guess what you would say more responsible demolition at that meeting. And on the 17th of June, we have the discussion about the ordinance on LGBTQ, the LGBTQ ordinance that we discussed earlier. That'll be on the 17th of June at 7:00.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no reports at this time, and no meetings are scheduled.
Water and utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled at this time.
Emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, but there is a meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on the 19th of June. During that meeting, we'll be discussing the county fiber loop and the new internet services that it's going to be providing, and potentially to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance, we have 19-102, increased expenditure for Mason Custom Builders, public buildings, 19-103, accepting award of funds from the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program, 19-104, discussion of parking enforcement program, 19-105, state bid equipment for new police cruisers par public safety, 19-106, Medina Municipal Airport consultant selection, 19-107, agreement with Medina City Schools for Reagan Park, Eliza Northrop Connector, 19-108, income tax reallocation to be discussed at the 6/12/19 budget hearing, 19-109, agreement with Bransted and Caro, Medina County Design, Planning, and Construction Management Services for joint construction of a county-city courthouse, 19-110, new EPA regulations for stormwater management, erosion control, and illicit discharge, and 19-111, expenditure over $15,000 for Data Command LLC for the water department. Notices, or reports of municipal officers, Mary Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parking deck is out to bid, and once we get those back and evaluated by the panel, we're going to try to start construction as soon thereafter as we can. That's going to be right outside City Hall here. When that begins, both for the staging area and the parking area, there will be no parking for the better part of City Hall, as well as the lot between Sully's Patio and Porter's Shoes. There is parking available at the southeast corner of West Liberty and South Elmwood. The lot the city just purchased in the 200 block of South Elmwood across from Napa, as well as the existing parking deck behind the Common Pleas Court. This project is expected to last from late June, early July, through the spring of next year. I'd like to personally congratulate Discount Drug Mart on your 50-year recognition. We're very thankful and appreciative of you having your corporate headquarters here, as well as numerous stores in Medina County. On Tuesday, June 4th, at 11:00 AM, I attended a ribbon cutting for the $750,000 driver's skill pad course at the Medina County Career Center. It's two and a half acres paved to train young drivers how to avoid collisions, if at all possible, and if unavoidable, to direct the vehicle to something that's less damaging and less likely to cause injury to them. This was funded with a $350,000 capital grant from the state of Ohio, thanks to Senate President Larry Obhoff, Representative Steve Hambley, and Representative Darrell Kick. And there was also funding from Westfield Bank and numerous foundations, and it was a great collaborative effort for our county to help preserve the life of our young drivers. The farmer's market began and is each Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The Medina Community Band, free concerts on the square each Friday night kicked off last Friday. Like to thank Councilman Shields for doing the welcome for that. And those will be each Friday night through June and July, as well as on July 4th, and they start at 8:30 in the evening, and they're weather dependent. Main Street Medina this coming Saturday, June 15th, is presenting the Pizza Palooza, where a variety of pizzas will be in competition with each other on our square from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And Oremaco is going to present Jazz Under the Stars on that same day, Saturday, June 15th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on our square. Thank you.
Thank you, Director of Finance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we divide our budgets into three groups. We've completed the council's review of the first group, and the first hearing for the second group is Wednesday.
We can't wait. Mr. Huber, Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chief Kinney, Police Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report for council and the public this evening. First, I also want to extend congratulations to Discount Drug Mart on their 50th anniversary, and we appreciate the partnership that we have and the ongoing investment and growth in the city. Also, coming up on June 21st is our next round of ribbon cuttings, and we have six scheduled that day, starting out at 10:00 AM with Aura Designs. It's a grand opening, new business for 901 North Court Street. Then at 1:00, we go down to Hair Classics, which is a grand reopening and new location at 520 East Smith Road. At 2:00, we congratulate Firestorm Gear on their grand reopening, new location in the Raymond Building at 139 North Court Street. And at 3:00, we'll go right next door to Lucy Marie's Boutique, which is a new business in the city, also in the Raymond Building at 139 North Court Street. At 4:00, we'll go next door to Heart and Soul Gift Boutique for their grand opening, also another new business in the Raymond Building. And then last but not least, we'll have, we'll go at 5:00 to the Town Hall, Engine House to celebrate the renovations with funding from private sector, as well as the capital bill. All of the ribbon cuttings are in conjunction with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce. And in addition, for the 5:00, we also are partnering with the Community Design Committee and the city's Archive Commission. We are working on getting the ribbon cutting invitations sent out, so please check your inboxes. And I also wanted to thank all the dignitaries for being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I would also like to congratulate Discount Drug Mart on 50 years in business. Also wanted to thank them personally for all the years my family, everyone in my family's worked for them at one time or another, and I wanted to thank them for everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Worley Parks, Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one update. We are in the process of installing an activator bollard at Fred Greenwood Park Splash Pad, so when you visit the park to go to the splash pad, it might not be working, but you have to go press the button on the activator and it'll turn it on. This was an effort to minimize some shutdowns for chemical unbalances, as well as save on energy when it's not being used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. An update, our East Smith project, which was essentially complete last year, except for the two intersections at Court Street and Broadway, contractor will be working over the next two weeks. This week concentrating on some curb and some concrete work. There will be some minor lane closures during the day for that. The big impact is next week, when they're actually going to be resurfacing both of those intersections. They'll be doing them one at a time, and it will be three days in a row, or at least three dry days in a row, but it will require at each intersection a complete closure for several hours. They won't move from one to the other till the one's finished, so there won't be any simultaneous closures, but for a couple days there during the day, can expect some traffic delays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, communications, petitions, we have one liquor permit, not to object to the issuance of a C1 permit to Rivalry Brews LLC, doing businesses of rivalry brews. First floor, 124 Lafayette Road, suite number 101, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the liquor permit?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Unfinished business, we have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be added into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair, or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I would call Benjamin Colonis to the microphone for a resolution. This'll be a little easier, this is a little different from what we normally do, but it'll be a little easier. I have a resolution number 8319, it's a resolution congratulating Benjamin W. Colonis at attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Move to approve resolution 83-19.
Second.
Okay, so a resolution says, whereas Benjamin Colonis is currently a member of Troop 5137 Great Trail Council, and as a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, Benjamin Colonis received his Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting. And now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council hereby commends Benjamin Colonis for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop 5137 in attaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Benjamin Colonis in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award. That this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Resolution 83-19 passes at seven zero.
Congratulations.
For my Eagle Scout project, I did a reforstation project at River Sticks Park. It was built in kind of a grassy land, and it connected two forests, or it connected the two forested areas, so there's going to, over time, it will develop into one forested area. We planted 20 trees, and we did that in November of last year. Thank you.
Now, we're going to have several commendations to follow, but council will do the first one. This is for the 50 years of Drug Mart. And I don't know which representative would like to come up, but you're all going to come up. Okay, I'll come up. You can line up over here, I guess. Yep, line right in here. This is going to be resolution number 8419. It's a resolution congratulating Discount Drug Mart for the occasion of their 50th anniversary.
Move to approve resolution 84-19.
Second.
This is, says, whereas Discount Drug Mart opened their first store in Elyria in 1969, and the first store in Medina County in 1975, and Discount Drug Mart now has a total of 75 locations, with seven of them being located in Medina County. And Discount Drug Mart is an employee-owned company that ranks nationally among the top 10 chain drugstores based on sales volume and the number of locations. Discount Drug Mart was founded by a pharmacist, Parvis Bouje, with his wife, Milford, both deceased, and today their sons, Dave, Don, and Doug, and their daughters Diana and Deborah, lead the company. And since 1982, both their corporate office and distribution center are located in Medina County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that the City of Medina, the mayor, the administration hereby recognize and congratulate Discount Drug Mart for their outstanding achievement. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Resolution 84-19 passes at seven zero.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Michelle Gilchrist from the Northern Ohio Regional Liaison for the Office of the Governor of Mike DeWine.
Good evening, everyone. I bring a resolution from both Governor Mike DeWine and John Husted, recognizing the 50th anniversary of Discount Drug Mart. Since we're all probably going to say many of the same things, I'll just summarize it by saying, thank you for your commitment and dedication to making a positive difference to your community and to the state of Ohio, and making your community and the state a better place to live, work, and raise a family. On this day, the 10th of June, signed by Governor Mike DeWine and Lieutenant Governor John Husted. Congratulations.
Next will be Rebecca Armstrong from the State Treasurer, Robert Sprague's office, Deputy Director of Public Affairs.
Good evening. On behalf of State Treasurer, Robert Sprague, I'd like to honor and celebrate on your 50th anniversary. Discount Drug Mart has made many contributions that have lasted, has had a lasting impact on the community, and Ohio is proud to call Discount Drug Mart home.
Next, we have the Honorable Stephen D. Hambley from the State of Ohio Representative. And also Darrell Kick, State of Ohio Representative.
Thank you. Good evening. I could say the first time I remember hearing about Discount Drug Mart, well, I was just graduating from high school, and my recollection is they were fighting with the city of Brunswick over the size of the sign. Brunswick still has a reputation of fighting with businesses about signs still, apparently. But anyway, but I think when you start looking at what happens in retail, so forth, and the things that you remember, and that little jingle that we all heard on TV and radio, Discount Drug Mart saves you from the runaround, I looked it up. The earliest I could see it was 1989, so that means that jingle's been around for about like 30 years. It's one of those worms that just keep on digging in. But I think it's a good sign. It's definitely a good sign, and I think when we start looking, I remember I was never in retail, but I know that one of the sayings is about retail, either you take care of your customers, or your customer, or your competition will. You either take care of your customers, or your competition will. And I think that is what Discount Drug Mart has been all about for the last 50 years, indeed. It has been, the sign has been, that you've been taking care of your customers, and that's a great indicator of that. So I will turn it over to Darrell Kick, and we have a joint commendation to present.
Well, other than driving by the stores, my first recollection, recall, recall, is actually Steve Ferris, in a former position that I had. He would reach out to us on issues that they were having, and it's great to see him here today. It's great to see so many others that have been a part of it and continue to be a part of it, and I love the, I believe it was the engineer back here that said they all worked, somebody in my family, had all worked for them at some given time. That's what it's all about, right? They have an idea, they brought it to the community, they love the community, and it's grown, and like Steve said, they took care of their customers. You don't get 50 years without doing that. So on behalf of the Ohio House, signed by the Speaker, as well as Tom Patton, myself, and Steve, we want to wish them all the best in the next 50 years and everything they've done for this community.
Okay, next we have Leah Jones from the US Senator Sherrod Brown's Regional Representative.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here on behalf of US Senator Sherrod Brown to share this certificate of commendation presented to Discount Drug Mart in honor of your 50th anniversary. Congratulations as you celebrate your 50th anniversary of Discount Drug Mart. For half a century now, you've helped Ohioans access prescription drugs in communities across our state. You fill an important role both for the families who patronize you and the workers who hold a stake in this employee-owned company. You have my best wishes for many years to come. Congratulations again.
Next, we have Heidi Matthews from Congressman Gonzalez, Gonzalez Office District Director.
Good evening. It's such a pleasure to be with you this evening, and although the congressman couldn't be present, he offers this congressional record that he submitted, which will forever be in the House of Representatives, official record. And I'll just summarize as well. At the end, it says, "I offer my serious congratulations to this valued business and celebrate with them for over a half-century of service to our communities." Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Hudson, the Medina County Commissioner.
Good evening, and congratulations to Discount Drug Mart. Commissioner Sweattick was supposed to be here tonight to present this resolution. She is in an airport in New York, and she has the signed resolution, so I'm going to give you a resolution, but it's not signed. We will get you the signed resolution. So 50 years of longevity says a lot about a company. You obviously have provided a very valuable service in taking care of your customers for a long time, and you're to be congratulated. So our commendation says, "By the Board of County Commissioners, Discount Drug Mart is recognized for its continued commitment to the community. They are hereby commended for their 50th anniversary and their dedication to their employees and customers, Medina County, and the state of Ohio." So congratulations.
The final one is from Karen Kandisky, the Office of Senator Robert Portman, Northeast Ohio District Director.
Good evening. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you today. On behalf of Senator Portman, I bring you all greetings and special recognition and congratulations to our friends at Discount Drug Mart. After all of these great commendations, I'm certain just about everything has been said, but we're just so pleased that you call Ohio your home, and that you invest in our communities. And sort of to touch on something Darrell mentioned, one of the things that is, I think, particularly nice is to pause and think about all the lives you've touched over the years, not only your employees and their families, but the many people in the community you serve. So we appreciate that. I'll leave with you, recognition from Senator Portman, and congratulations.
Did you guys officially want to, anybody want to give a little update?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to thank the mayor and city council for tonight, and for the partnership we've had with you guys for these many years. Kimberly alluded to it, it's been great for us to know and call Medina home. So again, thank you to Kimberly, the mayor, and the council, and the members of council for tonight. I would like to introduce a few Drug Mart folks that are here. So you've got Dave Bergman, he's our senior vice president for advertising. You've got Dave Bouje here. It was Dave's father who started Drug Mart back in 1969, Mr. B., as we call him. Dave Beattash is our senior VP for marketing. John Ganz is our company president. Mr. B.'s daughter, Deborah, Debbie is in the audience tonight, she's here. We've got a few of our folks back there. Brenda and Bridget have come, they work in the corporate office here with us, and thanks you for coming too. So again, thank you. Quick introductions, if maybe John and Dave want to say a few other words.
Well, we're very, very pleased and proud to be here. It's been a long and a very enjoyable partnership over the years. I know whenever we have anything with the city and the county, you know, you're always there to work with us and make things as accommodating as possible, and we just appreciate all the kind words and the accolades. It is quite an achievement, you know, I've, I started in the company when I was, you know, probably 15 years old, doing different things, and so where we've come from where we started is pretty remarkable. And Mike's, Mike's father was our former president and was with us for 40 years, over 40 years, and so he had a lot to do with it, as well as, of course, Mr. Bouje and all of our employees that have worked with us over the years. So thank you very much.
I would just like to say, speaking for my brother, Don and Doug, who couldn't be here, this is, it's quite an honor to receive these proclamations, and for the recognition from the state and the representatives, the council, members of the city of Medina, Medina County. I can remember when my first opportunity in Medina came with the Drug Mart on Harding Street, when I was the manager there, and John was my stock boy. But I know my dad always thought of Medina as his home, and that's why we expanded, we moved our warehouse facility here. We've continued to grow, and we've enjoyed the community, their support, and everybody here. I just wanted to say thank you very much for that.
Just thanks again, just, we've got some light refreshments at the back when you're...
But remember, refreshments have to happen after the meeting. So we have a, we have five ordinances and one resolution, so if you can bear with us for probably another 10, 15 minutes, we'll be able to have refreshments. So that'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have ordinance 8519, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the north taxiway extension project at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. The FAA awarded the city of Medina a grant for the finishing of the north-south taxiway, which runs on the west side of the north-south runway, and at this point, through this ordinance, we can let bids so that construction can begin.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 85-19 passes at seven zero.
Ordinance 8619, a resolution or an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application for grant assistance for the Ohio Department Services Agency, Ohio Housing and Community Development, in connection with the Small Cities Fiscal Year 19 Community Development Black Grant, CDBG program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause been requested, I moved add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is our, the Small Cities Grant application that we do in two-year cycles with the state of Ohio. It's through this community development block grant funding, and basically it sets out a various number of programs that we develop every year. enforcement, our low-moderate income census blocks, tracks, rather, partial funding for public transit in Medina County, project for park improvements here in the city, and then typical fair housing, funding, administration, and then money to help fund comprehensive plan update. So these are items, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a two-year period, so about seventy-five thousand dollars per period. But, you know, that, those dollars can function between, they don't have to be allocated into individual calendar years. The necessary public hearings have been held, and we would just ask that the ordinance is approved this evening so that we can get the application in, which is due June fourteenth, which would be this Friday. So that's why the emergency clause is requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Resolution eighty-six dash nineteen passes seven zero.
Ordinance eighty-seven nineteen, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a railroad crossing agreement between the city of Medina and the Wheeling and Lake Area Railroad Company relative to the West Smith Road Crossing.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it this time.
My second includes emergency clause. Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This came to us from the railroad. We've been pursuing a, an agreement for that, to allow us to install a water line under the rail crossing on West Smith to replace an old rail, a water line. They did approve that, but they also requested that we, required that we enter into this agreement with them. I would say this agreement is subject to the law director's review and approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause?
Mr. President?
Mr. Huber?
This agreement has a couple of clauses that include indemnification language that we're still trying to work out.
Okay.
And that's what Patrick's referencing with respect to, subject to our approval.
Understood. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance subject to the law director's approval?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-seven dash nineteen passes seven zero, subject to law director approval.
Ordinance eighty-eight nineteen, ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditure to Core and Main to sixty thousand dollars for the Water Department.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Bakoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will permit the continued purchases of maintenance items for the city water system. Some of those items include fire hydrants, pipe, valves, repair clamps, tapping sleeves, just to name a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-eight dash nineteen passes seven zero.
Ordinance eighty-nine nineteen, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one two thousand and nineteen Ford F-550 four-wheel drive truck from Montrose Ford for the street department.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Bakoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance allows for the purchase of a utility truck for the street department. This vehicle replaced a two thousand and four pickup truck, as well as a two thousand one-ton dump truck that we sold at auction. This purchase is made through our participation in the CUE contract, which is the Community University Education Purchasing Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-nine dash nineteen passes seven zero.
And resolution ninety nineteen, a resolution relating to a moratorium on enforcement of zoning setback, parking, and landscape requirements where nonconformities result from the governmental taking of property pertaining to the Ohio Department of Transportation's ODOT's State Route Eighteen project.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. We were requested by ODOT to pass this piece of legislation, this resolution. They are starting the process to acquire right-of-way for the State Route Eighteen corridor improvement project. This moratorium of enforcement is designed to serve as a notice to the property owners that have to sell some property to ODOT, that they will not be subject to any zoning problems as a result of ODOT's taking some of their property.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution ninety dash nineteen passes seven zero.
Council comments? Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody that came out to Rockin' the Court this past week. It was beautiful weather, great time. Plan on doing it again next year, so keep your Junes free on the weekend. Got two events coming up that I could use some help with, and that is the South Town Cleanup is the first one. It's June twenty-second. We're gonna go around the southern part from Square Down, do a trash cleanup. We need a lot of help on that. If you would like to help, please sign up at MainStreetMedina.com. We'll be staging at Spokes Cafe. It's at eight AM on June twenty-second. And then we also have the Champion Creek Cleanup. This one, we get to go splash around in the creek. My son is very excited about that one. It is July twentieth. We're staging at the Hawkins Markets where we're gonna start, and that is also at eight AM on July twentieth. Again, sign up at Main Street Medina if you're interested in helping us out.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Well, thank you. And I'd like to thank Councilman Heffinger for his help with Rockin' the Court. It enabled us to expand Rockin' the Court this year from South Court Street to South Broadway. He was a good partner in that. And to thank the special police who came and helped us keep everybody there safe, so you, so everybody could hear that nice variety of beautiful music on a beautiful Saturday evening. And I'd also like to say welcome home to former Councilman Mark Colissar, who is in the audience and was the founder of the Champion Creek Cleanup and the driver behind the Champion Creek Cleanup. And you've gotta be really happy to hear that you've got a council rep who took your seat now after you resigned, and he is committed to working on those environmental things and concerns of his constituents, as you were, Mark. So it's great to see you back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to Discount Drug Mart. My first experience was in nineteen seventy-eight in the Lakewood Store, and I've been shopping there ever since. So, but that was a long, long, long time ago. The, part of the city's strategic plan includes the economic development, and I've been tasked with keeping Kimberly moving in the right direction with that. And the, I'm gonna work this out in a couple of phases here. The first phase is just to introduce everybody to what is on this strategic plan. There are five main action items, kind of, some, some, kind of sound repetitive, but they really aren't. One is the attraction and expansion of the business, and the goal here is to successfully attract new businesses to the city of Medina and to encouraging expansion of businesses currently located. The Economic Development Department uses the website and newsletters to promote the city and business opportunities available. Spray Products is an example of this type of attraction project. They brought part of their manufacturing from the Philadelphia area to Medina. We work with the County Made-in-Madena Manufacturing Expo, where local companies display their products that they make. Here, talk to students and residents about career opportunities available in the manufacturing. We also maintain inventories of available properties and updated on a regular basis. We maintain three different property databases. The next area is expansion and retention. To assist the expansion and retention of the businesses located in the city of Medina, Carlisle Break and Friction is one example of a retention and expansion project. They selected Medina over several other locations in different states to expand their business. Expansion, attraction, expansion, and retention, and this, the goal here is to educate and inform business owners on the financial assistance opportunities. The city uses the Job Creation Grant to attract new and retain current businesses. Sandridge Fuse Foods, Spray Products, Carlisle Break and Friction, and Drug Mart are a few of the companies have taken advantage of this grant. In one current project, the Economic Development Committee is collaborating with the County Economic Development Committee to potentially form an Energy Special Improvement District or ESID. This ESID will allow the commercial properties, opportunities to participate in property assessment, clean energy, or pace financing program. Property owners would take advantage of, make, make energy-efficient upgrades to their solar, geothermal, wind, or new HVAC, to name a few, to finance them through the self-assessment on their property taxes. This is an ongoing effort. Requests to participate in this program are on the increase, according to Kimberly. And for details on the ESID, please check chapter seventeen ten of the Ohio Revised Code. And then fourth is fair property, to promote the use of existing fairground properties. The use of the property is to hold the Made-in-Madena County Manufacturing Expo every other year. This shows property, the property as a possible event venue for other organizations, looking to the possibilities of bringing a bluegrass festival to the fairgrounds. And lastly, the generational development opportunities, Medina is always being marketed through various means. We're looking into bringing the cable competition into the city, utilizing the fiber loop, and that'll be on the nineteenth of June. So, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. And just to remind everybody, maybe there's new people in the audience who could tell you, we have a strategic plan in the city of Medina that we follow, and each council member's task was following one of the goals and, and keeping abreast of it, and then reporting back to the community of what's going on with respective goals. So I think that's been a great guide for us as a council and administration of how, what we want to follow, where we want to go in the future. And as you can see, it seems to be working, because we believe that we're, are at least guiding the city of Medina in the correct direction in the future by making it more accessible to other communities around Northeast Ohio, and trying to be a focal point of what it is to be a small town in Northeast Ohio. So I appreciate everybody's efforts on that. With that said, now we have refreshments, so everybody can be excited. In the back of the room, once the meeting is adjourned, we can recess into, or disadjourn into refreshments. So with that said, the meeting's adjourned.